Stevens?
Here.
Director Wallace?
Yes, here.
And we don't have any special orders of business. Anyone want to modify the agenda? I do not. And then the public comment. Do I have to read this whole thing or just say pursuant to executive order N 2920, text message public comment can be made to the following number and will be read aloud during public comment sections of each agenda topic. The number is 530-205-8603. And/or you can email david.vanquest@truckietahoaairport.com.
Teresa Chirodet, if somebody's on the Zoom call, please use your raise hand feature and the people that are on the Zoom call that want to participate and have public comment, raise your hand. I'll call you by your last name or your phone number.
Perfect. Okay, well, let's jump right into Josh, procedure for filing board vacancy.
Thanks, President Odette. So in the packet, there was a memo that we put together that sort of outlines this process and the process is strictly defined by statute. So we just sort of follow what's laid out. And generally, there are three options before the board today. One option would be to direct staff to begin the process of requesting application to appoint someone to fill former Director Morrison's seat. The second option would be to call a special election to fill that seat. And the third option would be to take no action. If the board decides to take no action, then the ability to appoint a replacement or call an election will default to Placer County. And they have some time to make that decision. If they fail to act within that time, then it would come back to this board for a, to call a special election. At that point, we wouldn't have any discretion. Before I open it up for questions, just a couple of things I wanted to note. The first is on the term of the appointee. Because Director Morrison submitted his letter of resignation less than 130 days from the next board general election, the person who is appointed and/or elected to fill his term will do so for the balance of the term. So they would sit for two years and their term would expire in 2022. The second issue I wanted to talk a little bit about in detail is just if the board decides to do a special election, the timing of that election. So in normal world, you know, pre-COVID, this would be pretty straightforward. And because of some of the timeline requirements, there is a pretty significant amount of lead time before that special election can be called. It needs to be called on an established elections date. Here, the next established elections date that will be available would be March 9th of 2021. There is a little bit of flexibility, given the current situation, for us to potentially explore an all-male ballot election. That would require coordination with the county, both county election offices and staff's prepared to do that if that's what we're directed. But even in that option, staff anticipates that the special election wouldn't be held until spring 2021. We asked for preliminary costs of a special election and those would likely be about $100,000. So it is a significant cost. Then last thing is just sort of the timeline if the board, you know, for making this decision. So if the board wants to appoint someone or call a special election, it needs to do so within 60 days. And for us, that makes the deadline to act October 25th. Unfortunately, that means that we wouldn't be able to wait until the October special meeting to make a decision. And the board would either need to direct staff to bring back an item at the September regular meeting or call a special meeting prior to October 25th for us to take action. So, you know, I think what we're hoping for as staff is just some direction from the board on which option you'd like us to pursue. There, of course, would be no formal action today. It would just be setting up formal action for when the board would like us to do that. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions from the board that you may have.
So if I understand you, we've, today, we could potentially, if we all agree, decide that we're going to appoint someone, but we have at least 15 days to receive applications or letters of intent or that type of thing?
That's correct, President Odette. So if the board's direction to us is to request applications for appointees, we will get the notice out as soon as possible. That notice has to be out 15 days before you make an appointment. And that would still allow us plenty of time for the board to make an appointment, for example, at your September regular meeting if you so desire.
That sounds pretty tight.
And we leave the, sorry, Teresa, I should ask how you want to do this. I do have a bunch of questions.
Go ahead.
Before leaving, and I should just, okay.
Go ahead.
So Josh, just following on from that, what ability do we have to have a 30-day application period, for example, greater than 15 days?
Absolutely, that's up to the board. So 15 is the minimum and you could have as long as you'd like up to that October 25th deadline for us to take action.
Okay, great. Well, I'll start with a series of questions, some of which I posed earlier and the answers were published to the board members but not to the public. So I'm just gonna go through those and Josh or Kevin, ask you to respond as appropriate. My first question is, can Aaronson, David Diamond, or Lee Golden, if we choose to go through the appointment approach versus the election approach, could those three people who are candidates right now, they're three of the five candidates, could they apply to be appointed? And if they did choose to apply, what would be the impact on their candidacy in the election cycle?
Yes, so they would be eligible to apply. It would not have a direct impact on their candidacy. What would happen is, you know, if that appointee, whoever was appointed to fill the seat that was going to expire in 2022, was elected in November, they would have the option of resigning their 2022 seat, taking the 2024 seat, and that would create a new vacancy in that Director Morrison, former Director Morrison's 2022 seat. And we would go through this process again and the board could either appoint someone to fill it, call an election, or allow the county to make a determination.
And there are currently four directors on the airport board, the four of us who are here today. Do we have the ability to apply for the two-year seat? And if we do, what are the implications of that?
Yeah, so we've been unable to find any direct prohibition on a current director applying to fill that vacancy. And so we do believe it is permissible for a current director to apply. However, it is our opinion that that current director would then have a conflict of interest in any vote to actually choose an appointee. And that director would need to recuse him or herself from that decision. That conflict of interest would arise both under the Political Reform Act as a financial conflict of interest due to the nominal compensation the board receives, but it's still enough to qualify, as well as a conflict of interest under the common law. Common law conflicts of interest are a little tricky and not things we run into very often. But the general idea is that if a director has a personal interest at stake, even if it isn't financial, they shouldn't participate in a decision that affects that. And here we give, you know, we feel, given the, you know, prestige and gravitas of holding a director, that that sort of conflict would apply. So that director would need to recuse him or herself from the decision.
And then, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just, sorry, I forgot one part. I did not answer one part of your question. So if we had more than one of our current directors apply, that would, you know, put us in sort of a tough spot without a better way of saying that because we could run into a situation where we have less than a quorum that could make the appointment. And that may mean that the issue would default to the county.
And then, following on from that idea, if one of the current four board members applied and was appointed, then that creates a vacancy. So what happens then?
So in that case, the current director would resign their current seat, which ends in 2020. They would accept the 2022 seat and that would actually create another vacancy in the 2020 seat, which this board could go through the same process to fill. Or if you chose, you could leave it vacant until it was filled during the election. It would be up to the board.
And by the election, you mean the election in November, this year's election?
Correct, because that seat will be filled in the November election.
Yep, yep.
And we'd be left in the 90-day period, so.
And I think you already, in fact, I know you already addressed this, the issue of, is there a way that we could use the current election to fill the Morrison, Jim Morrison's seat? And you explained earlier, no, why we cannot do that. The timing doesn't allow us to do that.
So unfortunately, there's this pretty significant lead time in the government code and elections code to get something on the ballot. So we would not be able to fill the vacancy in the upcoming November election.
Okay. And then this, the, a lot of those questions I just asked were maybe kind of procedural things for people who are on the board now and for people who are running for election, applying. And the next few questions I have, I'll just say, I sent these to Josh and Kevin earlier and I'm pretty sure you only responded to me. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna ask them so everybody can hear them and the public can hear them. And they're maybe relevant to some, if we go the route of making appointments, the questions may or may not be relevant to some of the applicants because we don't know who, we don't know if we're gonna do it that way. We don't know who the applicants are. So we're not sure if they would apply, but in the data gathering. So how do we, my first question was, how do we handle it if an applicant has business with TTAD? For example, if an applicant has a hanger lease or some type of other lease, is there any impact of that on their application?
So there's no direct impact on the application. They're still eligible for appointment, of course. They may have a conflict of interest in, you know, their personal issue while they're sitting on the board, but that's something that we would address at the time if an issue arose. And at most, it would likely mean a recusal from a vote on an item that they had a personal stake in.
And as we know, Teresa and Rick, who are currently on the board, they are running for election. And so is there any impact if any of the potential people who, if we were to go the applicant route, the appointment and applicant route? If an applicant has made a campaign contribution to either Teresa or Rick, is that, does that have any meaningful impact?
From a legal perspective, it has no meaningful impact and doesn't preclude, you know, any current director who received a campaign contribution from an applicant on voting on that applicant's appointment.
And if outside of TTAD, an applicant has a business relationship with either Teresa or Rick, does that set up anything we need to be concerned about?
So potentially, it would be handled in the same way any item of business that comes before this board is handled. And if, you know, a director had a current business relationship with an applicant that qualified as a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act, that may prevent that director from voting on the appointment. But that isn't specific to this situation. It's the same general rules that apply in any decision by the board.
Great. Teresa, that's all the questions I have for now, anyway. Thank you.
Okay, who wants to go next, Rick or Mary?
Well, I had a follow-up with that last question that Lisa had, that if, if either any of these candidates had business with them, could they potentially have to be recused? And then we would have only three people voting instead of four.
That's correct, Director Heatherington. That's a possibility if a current director has a conflict of interest on the appointment vote.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm just making notes, okay? In terms of how much to do the special election, I had asked that and it was $100,000. Does that include both counties or is that per county?
Kevin made that call, so Kevin, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, so I was able to get ahold of a Placer County, they gave us a general number that it's about $9 to $12 per registered voter. I wasn't able to get ahold of anyone at Nevada County, but I imagine it's going to be similar. And I don't have our exact number of registered voters in the two counties. I could probably get that number, but then we could, that's kind of what we deduced, probably in that neighborhood of around $100,000, give or take, you know, a little bit there.
Because right now, when we share it, we spend, you know, when, I mean, we share it with all the special districts, like six, there's probably eight special districts.
Well, the town and the counties, everybody that is on that ballot divide up that. So there could be 15 entities that are sharing that cost in one ballot. So it's much, it's maybe $10,000 to $15,000. But I'll get that exact number from Kelly, but that's what we have in the budget.
Per county?
It's $10,000 total is what we're showing now. I've got to look at that number. Don't quote me on that. This came up in the last two hours, so I'm trying to fill those exact numbers.
Okay. I mean, it's just part of the calculus of, you know, is it $100,000 or is it $200,000, you know, in terms of registered voters in Placer and Nevada County? I don't know. Okay, that was just a question. Oh, another question. Let's say we have various applicants and the vote was a 2-2, you know, and this was all within the 60-day period. And then, let's say, you know, I mean, what happens then if we come to some agreement? At that point, then, does it just default to Placer County or is the option then to go to an election?
So, yeah, so the, it's both, Mary, so I apologize. Let me explain. So if, if it is, you know, just hypothetically, if the board asks us to, you know, accept applications for appointment, those applications come before you, you vote, you know, and you're not able to, you know, it's a 2-2 vote and that vote doesn't change. At that point, we would have the ability, if it was agendized or if we had time to call another meeting, to call a separate meeting to schedule an election. But all of that is based on the ticking clock of that October 25th deadline. And so if, if we don't take any action by that October 25th deadline, it defaults to the county. And so in that case, if there still was a 2-2 vote, it would go to the county and the county could appoint or call an election.
And then the county, do they get 90 days from that point or 30 on top of the 60?
I believe they get the 30 on top of the 60, but I will double-check the statute right now and correct myself if I'm incorrect.
Okay.
And if I could, Josh, you and I talked about this a little bit, that the one question I had is, do we have an option after 60 days to appoint someone if the county hasn't done it yet? And I think the answer was that we have 60 days to appoint and then, you know, we can't go back and do that until the county has run through their process. And then the only option after 60 days is for us to call an election.
That's correct.
Right, right. Helpful clarification, thanks.
I have a clarifying question, actually. You guys keep talking about the county and Placer County, but what about Nevada County?
So, you know, so again, this is sort of one of those situations where the legislature has thought of everything, probably because people ran into this situation previously and they didn't have a good answer. So the statute actually clarifies that for multi-county jurisdictions like ours, the county with the largest land area is the county that makes the decision. So for us, it would be Placer County.
So land area, not registered voters?
That's right. So this is something Kevin and I looked at because each time these situations come forward, the test is slightly different. So, you know, for LAFCO, it's assessed value. For elections, it's up sometimes, it's, you know, a number of voters. But in this case, the statute clarifies it's land area.
Okay, Rick, you have some questions?
I do. Josh, you said something that was an option that I didn't understand, that if this board refused to call for a special election or appoint, if we don't take any action, we just sit on it, it immediately goes to the county? Is that true?
It does, so it's still subject to that 60-day time period. I was just laying that as an option if, you know, yeah.
And that's October 25th is our deadline.
Deadline, yes.
And so if we don't do anything at our September 23rd board meeting, we can't wait till the 28th for our next regular board meeting. We'd have to have a special meeting.
That's correct.
Okay. I guess that's my questions and I'm gonna make a definitive statement. I am not applying.
I am not either.
Mary, I would confirm while we were, while we waited for the questions to come in, that 90 days is from the date of the resignation. So it's not 90 additional days, it'll be an additional 30. So we have a decision by Thanksgiving approximately.
So like November 24th or so? Okay, okay.
I have a follow-up question. Go ahead, Mary.
I was just talking about the process of how we would go through it because the town went through it and it was painful and not, not good the way it was done by many people thought that it was. And I'm assuming internally, like, could we run it like an ACAT appointment or how, what would be our process? Because, you know, the way the town did it, they did public interviews and then they had a public discussion. And it was, a lot of people had heartburn with that. So is there a process that we have to follow if we do appoint? Like with ACAT, what we do is we have the choice to privately interview people. We give them three minutes at the board meeting or the special meeting, either way, and then we make a poll, we do a poll. Can we follow that or do we have to do it in that public manner like the town did it?
So I think a couple of things. So first, if, if a quorum of the, of the board is going to be interviewing a candidate at the same time, then that interview needs to be discussed, needs to be done in an open session. And so it need to be public, similar to the town's process. If the, you know, if you decide to individually interview candidates outside of a public meeting, we want to be careful that you're not discussing the results of that interview with any other director and run into a serial meeting situation. But there'd be nothing that would prevent the board from doing that. On the actual appointment itself, you know, the same rule applies to us, applies to the town and it's in the Brown Act. And what it says is that all votes have to be done in, in public and there's no secret ballot voting. You know, I don't believe that would prohibit this board from doing an initial straw poll, provided the results of that poll were shown publicly and were public records that were available. And I think through the Zoom process, we would want to work as staff on how best, most appropriately to accomplish that. But then the actual motion and vote to appoint someone would be done in public, similar to the ACAT process, if that was the option the board chose.
Okay. Is that it? Mary?
For now.
Okay. I wanted to ask if, just hypothetically, if we say, okay, start the 15 days and it takes staff two or three days to get that notice out in three public locations? And then we do our standard board meeting and we can review the applicants at that point, right? And then we vote and let's say we don't agree, does it have to go to the county or can we call for an election at that point?
You would still be able to, yes, I think getting to, yeah, you'd still have the time to call for an election because we could set up a special meeting, you know, well in advance of the October 25th. Board, you know, a deadline for the board to make that decision.
Could we not make it at that meeting? Like if we go through the process and we, we can't agree, there's no majority vote, we could at that meeting call for an election?
Yes.
As long, as long as it happens before October 25th?
Yeah, and it's, and it, yes, and as long as we've agendized it as staff. So if that's the board's pleasure, we would request that the agenda be worded that way. So it'd be in the alternative to call an election if there isn't consensus.
And, oh, go ahead, Teresa. Do you have more? Okay, see, I told you it was at that point. So your question begged another question in terms of posting in three locations. What does that mean? I mean, is it like the Sierra Sun, the moonshine? Do they post it on Facebook or Nextdoor?
You know, some telephone poll.
Yeah, yeah, so actually, as surprising as it may be, the telephone poll would be the one location that would qualify. The legal requirement or is actual physical posting in three locations? I think this is an example of, you know, the law not really catching up with the times we live in. So it could be any three locations within the district. One of those could include the airport itself. And then it would just be two additional locations. But of course, that doesn't prevent us, if directed by the board, to do alternative outreach. And that outreach could include newspaper publication, it could include social media, website, whatever the board would like us to do.
So we can direct staff that we went posted in XYZ and maybe 10 locations or something?
Exactly, yeah. Just the minimum is three physical postings.
And, and then, and so, social media counts as a physical?
Not physical.
No, it would not count as legally required. We'd still need three, but it could be any, it could be an additional outreach if the board directed us to do that.
Okay. And, and is there, I mean, so we're a minimum of 15 days, but we could choose to go 21 or 28 days?
Yes.
Get more, potentially a bigger pool?
Yes.
Pushes us against the October deadline, though?
Well, I mean, if you went out three weeks, it would be, I mean, as soon as it would probably get posted, would be Tuesday the 8th. Then you're looking at, three weeks would be the end of September as compared to?
We would have another special board meeting.
Special meeting? Which, that, you know, as Kevin was talking, last month, the September and October board meetings are already very, very full.
Full.
And this seems like something we want to do at a special meeting. It just seems more conducive to that, in my opinion.
Hi, um, sorry, I don't have any, I don't have a question, sorry.
I have a question. When we filled out all of our candidate paperwork, does anyone applying for this have to fill out that same paperwork?
Well, good question.
You know, disclosure forms, et cetera?
I don't believe that they do because they're not considered a candidate for office, but that's something that we can confirm and we'll make sure if the board decides to go that way, that that is included in any notice that's sent out so folks are aware of the requirements. The way I've seen it handled previously with other clients, it's just an application form to this board without filing with the county or yet BBC.
Is there a standard application form or is it whatever?
Whatever each agency uses. One option, if the board wanted, would be just a modification of like the ACAT form or something like, like that. We, there's no required form.
And then, you know, if they were chosen, then they'd have to file the Form 700?
Exactly, they'd file the Form 730 days from the date of their appointment, just like, you know, the board when you assumed office.
Okay. Does anyone, any of you guys know how it went down at Tow City PUD? Because in the last election, Dan Wilkins did not win. And within two weeks of the election, a director resigned and then the remaining people appointed Dan. I'm wondering if, Mary, you had feedback that the town of Truckee wasn't the smoothest? Does anyone know anything about Tow City PUD?
No.
I don't, honey.
Yeah, I don't know the process they went through, but we can, we can.
I think he was like the next vote getter. I mean, what, there were four people running for three seats? And so when that person resigned, they, I guess, you know, had this resignation. And so when that person resigned, they, I guess, you know, had, had this resignation happen just that much later, we could have been in that position where-
I have to say, it's, it's, it's pretty hard for me that we have an election running right now with five candidates and we have to make this appointment before the election. So we're not going to get the, what, what I would say, the benefit of the voter's preference for the candidates. You know, one, one thing about the way the timing worked with Tahoe City PUD is they did have the benefit. I mean, they could have decided not to appoint Dan Wilkins. They could have done that. But they at least had the benefit of somebody who chose to run for elective, election, actively ran for election and was the next vote getter. So it's a, it's hard for me that we're so close to the election and we can't, we can't understand what the voter's choice is going to be for the candidates. And I'll just say, because of that, you know, because of that, it's somewhat my preference to do a special election. I know there's, I'm probably, I'm guessing from the questions that have been posed, that I'm, I might be the only one that feels that way. But I, yeah, I, I probably do have a preference for, for doing a special election versus an appointment. But I, I definitely want to go through public comment and I know we'll deliberate on that and hear what we all, what we all have to think about the two options.
And President Oded, I was able to confirm that Tahoe City did receive two applicants for their vacancy and appointed Director Wilkins based on that. I'm not sure what process they went through to advertise it. But that's something we can check in on with staff and let the board know.
Thank you.
It is unfortunate that this thing ends on October 25th before November 3rd. I personally would like to put it out for applications and see what we get. And then we can either go special election or appoint somebody or throw it to the county. Or something else that Josh might come up with.
Do we, if, if we have an applicant list, do we have to choose one of those applicants? Or can we then choose to have an election?
I know. You could, you could solicit applications, decide not to make an appointment and call a special election at that point.
You guys think we can get anything done if we don't appoint someone?
Pardon me?
I said, do you think we can get anything done with four of us if we don't appoint someone?
Yeah.
That's a hypothetical question.
Well, if you look at the December 18 board meeting, we only had three directors there and we got a lot done by having unanimous votes.
Yeah, I get that. This is four though, so it's more, could be good luck.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other clarifying questions? Are we missing anything? So, public comment? David, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry, I didn't put my hand up. This is Andrew Terry. Can you hear me?
That's reasonable. Mm-hmm. Go for it.
Okay. I have three points. First, there's a precedent. We lost Katie Morrison about eight years ago. And then Jim was appointed to take over her position. So there was an appointment process used the last time. During that process, the paperwork, basically, potential, potential candidates simply applied with a notice of interest. And that was used by the board to make their selection and then an interview process during a meeting. And then the third point is, I was trying to look, which is why I couldn't put my hand up, is that I was trying to look to see how many voters were in the voter database. And I happen to have that, but I, I don't have the right tools to open it. But I seem to remember it was significantly more than 10,000 voters. So those are my, that's, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Andrew, I'm sorry, could you, could you clarify the three points you had? I got the voter one. What were the other two?
So I'll just go through them. The precedent was Katie Morrison on her unfortunate death. You had a process to, for people to notify the board of their interest to take her, her place. Of course, in the end, Jim got that place. And then there was no paperwork needed ahead of time, other than, other than the notification to the board of interest.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Andrew, I'd like to know if that's your airplane.
You wish. But it's, it's a Kenyan-registered plane we use to fly into the middle of the Serengeti. There you go. On our own, private plane. Lovely. So the other half live.
I think I'm in agreement with Rick on process. Do the 15-day minimum. I mean, if you want 25, whatever, Mary, I'll find me that too. And see what we get and then call for an election if we can't agree on an appointee. But I also am of the opinion that some disclosure, we have to do it as candidates. I feel like some disclosure, can we require that? Can we ask people to do that? I mean, somebody could just send a Post-it note that said, I'm interested.
Yeah. Yes, the board could request that. And if somebody decided not to provide it, you could decide not to consider their candidacy. That would be your discretion.
So I know I'm only one vote, but I'm interested in that for sure.
One other comment. You know, I was okay with 15 days and talking on the regular board meeting, but I'm also okay, okay, making a longer timeframe and having a special. This is important. A special is okay.
Yeah, agreed.
With me.
It's going to take some time with the next one. Or not the next one. That's whenever we debate the candidates, applicants.
The, Teresa, the disclosure, what are you thinking of in that?
I mean, we have to disclose everything, right? We have to, what property we own, how much money we have, or you name it, all those same forms. If we could just ask for, we can't require, but we could ask for, maybe we can require, the same ones.
The Form 700.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the candidate filing disclosures you're referencing, Teresa, right?
That's a good point. I, I-
It is a good point.
Was the, is the Form 700 required of ACAT members?
Yes.
So two of the five applicants, actually four of the five applicants have formed, filed a Form 700.
By applicants?
You're talking candidates.
Candidates, yes. Pardon me, I'm confusing my process.
Yeah. I don't know if the other three candidates are going to apply to be appointees.
And don't you have to do a Form 700 even to do a candidacy?
You, you do, Director Hethin, that's a good point. And so they, they like, they've already filed that with, for their, for their candidacies.
So, you know, that seems, also, it seems fair because we'd hate to appoint someone and then they go, wait a minute, I don't want to fill out this Form 700 and we're back at door one. So for them to have done the Form 700 to at least realize, you know, what they're getting into if they haven't ever done this before.
Sorry to interrupt you to get a public comment though.
Yeah. This is going to say this, say the same thing, yeah.
Okay. This public comment comes from Matt Miller.
We lost you, David.
It says, it's a sign to get James Compadre, John Jones, back on the board.
Kevin, we need to give him better audio visual because this happened at the board meeting too.
Yeah.
Is he there?
Does anyone else have the public comment? Kevin, do you have access or party?
We can have some, he's just downstairs. We can, we'll figure out what's going on with his.
Yeah, I'm going to grab it. I'll be right back.
Yeah. It happens every meeting for David. Every single meeting, he has technical problems.
The one time he didn't is when he reported from the face of El Capitan with the iPad. It was great.
President Oded, I also think we have a request for public comment from Rebecca's iPhone.
Yeah, I can see that too.
Um, hello, my name is Rebecca. I'm actually a reporter for the union. I did just want to help facilitate the conversation by saying that there are 230,000 registered voters in Placer County and 1.9 million in Nevada County. This is total, but Washoe County specifically within that has 322,000. So just to give some perspective, I don't know if that's helpful at all because I don't know how the airport district board actually does vote if you guys just take voters from within your district or not. Sorry.
Thank you. Andrew, I see you over there.
I know there's a virtual hand I could put up, but I figured my own hand. I just looked and in 2016, latest census data had 20, just over 25,000 people in the district aged 18 and over. And if you apply a 60% rate to that, it gets you to about 15,000 potential registered voters. So there's a kind of hardish number.
That's around the number we were estimating, you know, registered voters. So that's, you know, probably what we'd be dealing with on a special election.
I'm just arguing the cost because you, you came up with a number of 10,000 as a ballpark estimate.
Well, the 10,000 is what we pay on a, for a general election. And I got to get that number. But what the county's saying in the special election where it's just our issue, a one-issue item, it's $9 to $12 per registered voter, if it's a one-issue election.
I'm just running the number.
Hardy, you're, Hardy, I can see you were trying to say something, but you're muted.
You're muted.
Using that number, if, you know, as anything, it's 15,000 voters times the nine to 12 is 135 to 180,000 dollars.
We're ready for public comment whenever you are.
Okay, let me comment on that, the dollars. When I was on the fireboard, we did a couple of special elections and we always went out to the rest of the special district to see if anyone else had an issue they wanted to throw in. So there might be others out there that could help share the cost if we go that route.
And they did that, that if there are other issues, it could bring the cost down. But if it's just ours, that's the worst case.
Yeah, you don't have very good voter turnout in that case either. It's a negative.
I believe they do it by how many voters there are because they still make the effort. So they don't charge by how many people actually vote.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready for public comment.
Okay. This comment comes from Matt Miller. Matt says, is this a giant setup to get Jim's compadre, John Jones, back on the board without a real election from normal people? Very, very, very fishy. Don't appoint anyone. That's all I got for now.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comment? Anyone on the Zoom? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. So now what, Josh?
So now I could be, go back to the board for deliberation. And then again, we're not looking for a decision today, just a direction from the board on how you'd like us to move forward.
I, I know I was the one of, maybe one or one of, of the people who advocated for calling the election. I, I can, I could go with Rick's and Teresa's idea of a two-step, potentially a two-step process where we do an extended application period, 21 or 28 days, special TTAD board meeting. And if that is not satisfactory as a way to identify a candidate, then we could make the decision for the election. So I, I do understand the cost factor and that it could, you know, potentially be not warranted. So I, I appreciate the thought process of kind of splitting the difference as one person, right?
Mary, what are your thoughts?
I, I kind of like having it out to September 30th. You know, it's like, that's a good date. Somewhere in there, that's three, you know, three and a half weeks. And in the application process, we would, you know, I don't know that we can require it, but we want the Form 700. And that, one other thought. Yeah, that's, that's kind of, I like that process too. And then having a special election probably somewhere early October or-
Special board meeting.
Yeah, that one. You know, October, it's 9/14, somewhere in there. And then we, you know, with that kind of structure. And then if we can't come to an agreement, then we, like you say, we still have the option to go to a special election. I like that too. I like the longer period.
I'm good with that. I just wanted to say I'm out of town October 14th through the 25th. So we need to go early in October.
Okay.
I'm out of town from the, the 4th to the 10th, but you don't need me. You really don't need-
You don't get to vote.
And can't, I mean, could you, if you were so interested on the timing, Teresa and Kevin, could you, do either of you have the option, since we're Zooming, to Zoom in?
I, I might. We're actually in a, in an RV with the kids and I can try and figure out-
That's what I'm doing.
Place that, yeah, that work. But, you know, in our staff's effort to maintain extreme neutrality with this issue, I don't know that I'm 100% necessary, but happy to help in any way.
Since we're all reporting schedules, I am in Yosemite from the 16th through the 21st.
Yeah. So I still think we-
I do have, I do have Wi-Fi, so I might Zoom, but I'd prefer not to do it. I'd prefer to enjoy Yosemite on trying to get out of trucking for a few days.
I do know, I, I do know vacations are important, time away is really good for our mental health and helps us stay crisp. Also though, it's a very significant issue for us, just to say it.
Yes, it is, Lisa.
So Teresa, you, and you're gone the 14th to the 23rd?
25th.
25th. Well, yeah, we have to do it before then anyway. Yeah, so that leaves us-
The first week.
You know, the 12th or 13th.
Yeah.
Or second. You know, and then once the applications come in, you know, I, I will personally be calling, just like I do with ACAT, where I call and talk to each of the applicants. Because I assume that's how the process would work. As, as, and we could do the interview as well. I just, I know that the heartburn of having a public discussion of applicants was quite an issue and caused, it was, it was not good in the town. So I, I guess we aim for either that first week in October or the 13th.
I would suggest earlier than later in case any, anything comes up.
Or the 7th, the week of the 7th. And Kevin, yeah, like, you know, Tom Breen was on vacation.
Oh, hold, hold it tight if I can.
Yeah, find a library.
Yeah, but yeah, I, I think you can, you know, Josh could handle this, but I'm happy to be on the call. Did I hear the 12th and 13th work for everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, I did a calendar kind of just to sort of see who blocked out.
Now, no, those, one of those two days might, might work for us.
That's Columbus Day. I don't know if that is considered a holiday or anything anymore. Yeah, those two days are, people are around.
Can we, can we plan, I guess what I'm hearing then in the motion, or not a motion, but is application, so the 13th, there's a list of things that we would like to include and then a special meeting on the 13th of, of October. I think that actually gives you a good amount of time to contact candidates if you'd like to do that individually without sharing information between you. But you could then have a week or two to do that and we can meet on the 13th. I think that fits everyone's schedule.
And will you guys, can you send them out to? And will you guys, can you send them out to us as they come in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll send out, as soon as we get them, just like we do with ACAT, we can send them out so you can get them earlier. And then I'll send out the schedule, assuming that's your direction and motion.
And do they, what's the, so obviously you'll have to notice the, the meeting date and we'll do all that. Can the applicant, application packages be published as part of that board packet?
Yes, they will be. Just for, that's a Brown Act requirement.
Okay, thank you.
And then I remembered what the other point I had was, in terms of the three sites, I mean, that's the newspaper, I think it should get into the Moonshine, Sierra Sun, at the airport. Where do you put things anymore?
School district.
Yeah, school district, under the PUD, we post them at some of the other.
All of them in the district.
And I also think we should post it through Facebook and Nextdoor. I mean, I'll post it if, on my own Nextdoor, but I think that, you know, Lauren is on Nextdoor that.
There's, Mary, there's a way to post on Nextdoor as an entity. For example, Nevada County and Placer County does it all the time. So we should post as an entity.
And make sure it's broad because my Nextdoor is Kernelian Bay. You guys aren't in it. I'm not in yours.
Right.
Right.
Sure that we're, you know, when we talk about PUDs, we're talking about all of them, you know, we can, we can put it at all those locations.
Well, that's being at their location, but that doesn't really get out to.
Yeah, but we have to. We have to do it at three physical locations.
Right, yeah. I'm just looking at how people function nowadays is through social media a lot, not many.
Yes, we'll do lots of, yeah, we'll get it out through channels that we're talking about. But my, my thing is I don't want to post it locally, you know, locally is the district. So I, I'm going to have to post it, which is fine in more than three physical locations to make sure there's, get all the different areas of the district. Yes.
Yeah. So to, a brief summary of that, there will be many physical locations that are posted because we're required to have, and the nature of our district. And so we're going to, you know, we're going to do more than dot the i and cross the t there. You're going to post to many physical locations. And then there'll additionally be a substantial social media website. And I'm going to request using our e-newsletter. You guys do a great job with the e-newsletter. So there's a lot of electronic distribution of the information, right? Not required, but, but we want to use it to get it out.
The way we can.
Yeah, our website, obviously.
Facebook and.
Yeah.
Cool. Do we need a motion to put all this in place? Sounds like we're in agreement.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, but if the board wouldn't mind, can I just run it back to make sure staff, we have everything appropriately?
Yeah.
Great. So we will post for applications. The applications will have a deadline of September 30th. Is that still the board's discretion? Okay. The, the application form will request that folks file and submit a Form 700, either a new one if they haven't already submitted one, or the one that they've submitted if they're a candidate or, you know, a current board member. The staff will schedule a special meeting on October 13th. That special meeting agenda will have two options for the board. Option one would be appointing an applicant. Option two would be calling a special election. Notice of the application process will be posted in three physical locations as required by the code. Those would include the airport, PUDs and schools consistent with past district practice. In addition, staff will publish notice in the Moonshine, Inc., the Sierra Sun, Facebook, Nextdoor, are the district's e-newsletter and the district website.
And also maybe the libraries on the front door of the libraries because some people are going there and that's a.
And the libraries as well.
Sounds good to me.
And then different, different topic, but related. Did we determine what process we're going to use on October 13th?
Meaning appoint someone or go to election?
Oh, no, sorry. More narrowly, how we're going to, I don't, I don't know the right vocabulary, how we're going to review the candidates. So for Mary referenced that we have a precedent with ACAT, that the ACAT candidates have three minutes to make a statement and then there's a discreet poll. But we, the board, in the case with ACAT, does not deliberate about the individual candidates. We just hear their statements and complete the poll. Is that what we think we're going to do for this situation on October 13th?
I'm open. Josh, do you have any input?
It's, it's something the board could discuss today or you can wait. And then, you know, based on the results of the application, that could be the first part of your discussion on, on October 13th. It's, it's really up to the board.
Did that include questions from the board to the various applicants?
It did not.
I didn't think it did. That's why I'm asking the question. I don't know whether I have any questions, but would that be possible?
Yes. And that, it's, this is one of those situations where the board has, you know, almost complete discretion as to how you'd like to evaluate candidates.
I know with the ACAT candidates, I call every one of them and spend 20 minutes to an hour with each of them. And it's really gives me some insight. And I'm just, I'm just remembering the heartburn that arrived at the town council when they had to fill Morgan's seat. And it, I know that the, the council members were not happy with how positioned they were in, in discussing it at that time.
So maybe we should just reach out individually if we have questions and not debate them in public.
And just a reminder, if that's the direction the board goes, please make sure you don't talk to other board members about your conversations. And please also remind the applicants not to share their conversations with you, with other board members. We don't want an inadvertent serial meeting.
That's correct.
Yeah. I think, Josh, your qualifications or qualifiers are totally appropriate. And Teresa, I strongly prefer the process you just outlined, that we handle it that way.
Okay, works for me. So is that enough direction?
That's enough direction for me, Kevin. Anything else for you?
We feel good about the, the direction we've been given.
Do we have any public comment before we wrap this up?
Maybe before we take public comment, we should have this posted and out probably Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. And which will give us plenty of time.
Yeah, Kevin, if it's not posted and out by close of business on Wednesday, I'd like you to let us know so we can consider if we need to extend the September 30 date. I understand it's very likely you'll hit it, but if it's not going to happen for whatever reason, I'd just like you to explicitly let us know.
Yeah, we'll let you know once it's posted, but by then we'll let you know.
Yeah, physical locations shouldn't be a problem. There will be delays with the Sierra Sun and Moonshine, Inc., just of when you would see it based off of their printing capabilities, their timelines.
Yeah, that's true. Will it even make it into Moonshine? Well, they could also.
Moonshine is once a month with the actual newspaper, but Miami might be able to put it digitally online on their website.
Great.
Great. Any public comment? No. Okay.
Nice, David.
Any further board member comments, questions? Okay, then we are done here.
Thank you.
All right, everyone?
Anyone want to make a motion? We adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
All set.
Is it roll call? Do we vote on the, we vote on the, yeah.
Yeah, we do. Mary?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Director Stevens?
Yes.
Director Wallace?
Yes, and I want to thank Josh and Kevin for pulling together so much information so fast.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
Sixty day clock started, we.
Almost.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, you guys.
Take care.
See you soon.
All right.